Everybody to the regular meeting, City Council, Monday, January 24th, 2022. I want to call this meeting to order pursuant to Government Code, Section 54593. Members of the Daily City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via livestream. livestream or on local channel 27. So let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic.
For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The city clerk, can we do roll call, please?
Mr. Buenaventura.
Present.
Ms. De Chivani.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Dr. Rod.
Present. Thank you, Ms. City Clerk. We have two presentations today, so we'll go with the first presentation. Update on pension obligations. Ira Summer, Senior Consultant of Gov. Vest.
Gov. Vest, yes, Dr. Mayor. If I may, I'd like to introduce Mr. Summer. Good evening, Dr. Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. This evening, I would like to introduce Ira Summer, Senior Consultant with Gov. Vest. Last year, the city hired Gov. Vest to assist with forecasting future pension obligations. And at this time, I present Mr. Ira Summer.
Oh, thank you. Give me just a moment to get my presentation ready. There, putting it back to the beginning. I apologize for that. Appreciate the opportunity to give a presentation now to the City Council. I've been giving presentations to City Councils, Board of Supervisors, state legislatures for over 20 years now. This is one of the first times that the City Council actually wanted to start their meeting 10 minutes early. That was something I'm not really used to. So I'm enthusiastic about how this is all going to go. Okay, so hopefully you can see the PowerPoint in the screen. This is, the intention of this is to help you all better understand what is, what's happened and what is going to be happening in the future with your, the pension benefits that you give to your employees through CalPERS, the California Public Employee Retirement System. So if you have questions about something, please ask. What I don't want to have happen is for me to, do you have a question on slide three? And we get to slide 15, and you're completely lost because you're stuck on slide three. So questions appreciated. What I'm planning on talking about, I'm going to start with some of the basics. I don't know what your backgrounds are on CalPERS and pensions. So I'll give a little background about how CalPERS works and what your pension benefits are for the Daily City. I'll talk about the major changes that have happened in the past year at CalPERS, and they'll be impacting your costs and funded percentages. And then we'll show the impact of these changes on your costs. Then at the end, we'll talk about some of the things you might be able to do moving forward to be able to have more control over this moving forward. This is slide three, so hopefully you don't have many questions about it. So when we talk about CalPERS as a defined benefit pension plan. And so the funding for CalPERS, the concept is relatively simple. The money coming into the plan is designed to be enough to cover the money going out of the plan. So over the long term, money in equals money out. The money coming out of the plan is a combination of pension benefits and expenses. And expenses for CalPERS are relatively low. They charge 15 basis points or about 1.5%, which is one of the most cost-effective defined benefit administration in the country. For the money going into the plan, it comes from a combination of employee contributions, city contributions, and investment income. And of these three, investment income is by far the largest. Over time, investment income tends to be someplace between 60% and 90% of the money that goes out the door. So the sooner you put money into the plan, and the more money they earn, the less it's going to cost the city. The way they calculate what it's going to cost is by making certain assumptions about what's going to happen with your people and the money. The economic assumptions tend to be, they have economic assumptions, which tend to be in the area of things like inflation, investment return, and salary growth. They also make demographic assumptions. So assumptions about when your people, when the city employees are going to retire, who might become disabled, who might quit, and how long they live once they're retired. So putting all these together, they figure out how much money is going out the door. Then they ask you to put money in to pay for this. And I use the word "ask" in a very general way. If they ask you for the money, you're required to make the contribution. Daily City itself has four different benefit structures under this plan for your different groups of employees. For safety, your police and fire. Those hired 2012 and before are in what's referred to as the 3% of 55% plan, which means that they get 3% of their pay, of their final pay for each year that they work if they retire at age 55. For those who retire, who were hired on or after January 1st, 2013, they're in what's referred to as the PEPRA Safety Plan. PEPRA stands for Public Employees Pension Reform Act. This was pension reform passed by Jerry Brown in the California Legislature in 2012 to address some of the issues of pensions becoming too expensive throughout the state. So the benefit structure here is a little bit lower. For your non-police and fire, what's referred to as miscellaneous employees, those hired 2012 and before are in the 3% of 60% plan, what CalPERS refers to as a classic formula. And those who were hired 2013 and after are in the PEPRA formula for miscellaneous. So that's the background. In terms of what's happened in the past year, the most significant thing that's happened in the last year is that CalPERS earned 21.3% on their investments. This is the strongest investment return they've had in about a decade, and one of the strongest they've had of all time. It exceeded their assumed rate of return by over 14%. And I'm mentioning that now because it's going to become important in just a couple of minutes. This graph shows you the, what their returns have been year by year. The bars are their investment returns year by year for the last 38 years. The red line is the assumed investment return, also known as the discount rate. What you can see here is that the 21.3% they earn this year, again, one of the strongest they've had, strongest they've had in the last decade since 2011, and one of the strongest they've had ever. You can also see from this that the returns vary significantly from year to year. Most of the time, they're consistent, they're relatively consistent and not far off from the target. But there have been a couple of exceptions, like the dot-com crash, where they lost money for a couple of years, and the Great Recession, where they lost a lot of money. One of the things they learned in the Great Recession was that when they were attempting during these years to have some of the strongest returns in the country, they got aggressive with their investments. And the more aggressive they got, they found that when the markets did badly, they lost a lot of money. And that ended up costing cities and counties a lot, a big increase in pension costs. And I'll bring that up again in just a moment. But the important thing to remember here is you are, they earn 21.3% this year. The impact on you is going back to that first picture, which is money in equals money out. The more money that comes from investment return, the less money that needs to come from your contributions. So that 21.3% return had a significant impact in lowering Daily City's future contribution requirements to CalPERS and improving the funded status of Daily City's pensions with regard to CalPERS. Now, other things also happened. CalPERS took this opportunity to lower the risk of their investment portfolio. As I mentioned before, when you take big risks, you earn a lot of money, but when the markets go down, you lose a lot of money. So investment risk and expected return tend to be related. So the more investment risk you take, the higher the returns are, but also the bigger the losses in certain years. And agencies didn't want to take the losses. So CalPERS in 2015 adopted a funding risk mitigation policy. And what this policy said is in years in which they earned, they beat their target, they beat their assumed return by enough money, they would use that opportunity to lower the risk of the investments, which, you know, would lower the investment return and raise the contributions, but not as much as they had hopefully dropped by having the high investment return. They adopted this in 2015. 2020-21 plan year was the first time that the actual investment return exceeded the investment return by enough to trigger this policy. So they adopted it in 2015, and this, because they beat it by 14%, that meant that they were going to lower the risk of the portfolio, and they lowered their assumed investment return from 7% to 6.8% beginning with the June 30, 2021 actuarial valuation. And as a reminder, by lowering the risk, that means less money is expected for future contributions, which raises, sorry, future investments, which raises future contributions. But this increase is not as big as the decrease in contributions that you're expecting to see because of the 21.3% return, and I'll show that in a couple of slides. CalPERS also, every four years, is required to review all of their experience and make recommendations towards other assumption changes. So the assumption changes they made, again, this discount rate change dropping from 7 to 6.8, which had the biggest impact. They also made a slight reduction in inflation expectations, dropping it from 2.5 to 2.3%. They raised the wage growth assumption across-the-board salary increases from 2.75 to 2.8. They also made some minor modifications to mortality assumptions, retirement, termination, disability. Those are expected to have minor impacts. It is, yeah, with the pandemic occurring in their experience time period that they're reviewing, they realized, or hoped at least, that we wouldn't be seeing pandemics too regularly and that that experience would not be repeated in the future. So they didn't want to have to make too many changes right now till they see how it all turns out. So what's the impact of these changes? Well, in terms of contributions, overall, these changes lower the city's contribution. So the green line shows what the city's contributions would have been over the next 20 years if they had earned 7% and none of those changes have been made in assumptions. You'll notice that the contribution requirements now, about 20 million in the year, were scheduled to increase and go up to about 30 million over the next decade. Instead, because, mostly because of the 21% return, but also because of the other two, sort of offset slightly by the other changes, this, the contribution increases are leveling out right away in the 23-24 year, and then starting to come down right away. So it lopped off some of the peak, and is expected to save Daily City millions of dollars over the next 20 years. In terms of the funded percentage, the funded percentage, the green line is the line that your funded percentage was supposed to go on if they had earned 7% and not made the changes. You were approximately 70% funded and were targeted eventually to get up to 100% funded. That's how the funding policy works. Because of the 21% return, the 21% return roughly increased your funded percentage by 10%. The change in assumptions dropped it by about 2, so the net impact was an increase of about 8%. So you jumped up. That means you're going to be, your plan's going to be better funded, your liabilities, your unfunded liability is going to be lower moving forward, which is what ended up lowering your contribution rates. So a lot of this talked about things that are outside of your control. CalPERS decisions, the markets. A lot of agencies, you know, given the good news, tend to let those things go. But, you know, there is a question of what you can do to get some better control, to stabilize some of the costs, to lower some of the costs moving forward. And basically, in short, short term, it's a question of allocating funding, finding money to make, either make additional payments to CalPERS. By making those additional payments, you lower the unfunded liability and lower the future requirements. Or potentially, to stabilize your costs, you can set up an internal reserve, putting money aside now or during years when revenues are higher than expected, so that you have them, to be able to use them in future years when revenues may not be as strong. Or making contributions to a 115 trust, a 115 pension trust, which is an outside trust. The money going into that trust would have to be used exclusively to pay for pension benefits. The advantage of a 115 trust, the biggest advantage is that you can invest the money in that 115 trust more aggressively than the money that's in your internal reserves. Your internal reserves are required by law to be invested in ultra-safe, ultra-short-term government obligations. Right now, earning maybe half percent to 1%. You can be conservative in a 115 trust with a mix of investments and consistently earn 4% to 5% during good times and bad. And over the course of five to 10 years, that can turn into real money. So a lot of agencies are looking at that. One other option is to consider pension obligation bonds. These bonds would take the unfunded liability you have to CalPERS. You issue that amount of bonds, you pay the bondholders a lower amount, 3% to 4%, maybe where it is right now, instead of paying CalPERS 6.8%. There are some risks of that, and we're not going to go about them, talk about them right now. But if you have your staff, we can work with your staff to look at these risks and help you better understand them if you are interested. A lot of, a lot of cities go through multiple contingency plans. So rather than doing one thing and figuring it's the one solution for everything, having multiple approaches so that when different things happen, you're prepared for that. And the other, the thing that's most important is to put it into your long-range planning. Generally, when people think about pensions, if they think about them at all, they tend to be third, fourth, fifth on your list of priorities. With a lot of other things, tend to be more important. So when extra revenue comes, if you wait till that day to make the decision, there's a tendency for most cities to not get any money to the pensions. The way to get money to the pensions is to decide beforehand that they are important. Maybe not as important as fixing the streets or the parks or the sewers, but important enough so when extra money comes in, you've got a plan to start taking some of it and putting it aside. So the, you know, if you're going to take any action today, it's to talk to your staff and tell them to bring back plans to you to help you make, do some of this later. Any questions?
Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Summer, thank you for your update. This is very, very good news. I don't know if it's appropriate at this time, but I will ask the question, and perhaps staff can provide answers. It is my understanding that Daily City is under in unfunded liability for pensions. In other words, we owe CalPERS money. Is that correct?
That's a yes and no. And I spent 30 years as an actuary, and actuaries are required to answer every question by their yes and no, or is it pants? So yes, yes and no is, yes, you owe the money. You are, you are about 80% funded, 78% funded. That means that your liabilities for past obligations are more than the money that you have in there right now. So you are underfunded technically. On the other hand, in terms of comparing you to other agencies across California, you are in the range where most of the agencies are. You may even be, you're probably a little bit ahead of the median agency throughout California. So being 80% funded is not terrible. It's not phenomenal. You want to get eventually to be 100% funded. You want to make sure that you cover all the promises that you've made to your employees. So eventually, you're going to get there. And the CalPERS funding methodology will get you there, but it won't necessarily get you there in the most cost-effective way. And it won't necessarily get you there by having you make contributions at the times when you want to make the contributions. And that's why taking action, just do things like setting aside a 115 trust or putting extra money aside when you have it, can give you better control to make the payments when you, when you have the money to make the payments.
Yes, that's the exact answer I was looking for. So I would implore staff to provide information as to how much is going out per year and look for methods that we can put funds aside. I completely agree with you. When someone takes a job with Daily City, they sign a contract and saying, estimated, if you're going to work X number of years, this is what you're going to get. So actuarial studies have been done to predict what it should be, and that's why the rate is what it is now. So I think we need to stay on top of this and make sure that the city is not underfunded, but at least come very close. 80% is very good, but you don't know what the future will hold, and we do have to make plans to improve for later. The other, can, provide a clarification for me, if you will, on the, on the idea of disability versus retirement? Let's just say you have a worker at Public Works who's been on the job for 15 years, and he or she gets injured on the job, but it's not, they haven't basically stabilized yet. I believe they get a year to come back to full duty. But if it won't draw out of the pension fund, rather it'll come from workers' comp, until at such time, they would have retired, say at the age of 62, then they can draw the retirement. Is that correct?
Not completely.
Okay.
If you determine that their disability is permanent,
Right.
then they begin to collect from the pension fund a disability benefit, which is calculated on a slightly different formula.
Gotcha, gotcha. So the pension fund does offer a disability payout as well?
It does. The disability benefits tend to be, Public Works will get them to some degree. Police and Fire tend to, their, their jobs tend to be a lot more physical, a lot more risk associated with it. So there's a higher degree of people getting disability from police and fire than there are from your general employee. But it still, it still happens under both cases.
Thank you so much. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Dr. Mayor, if I may just make a point, since we're on this one slide, thank you. Just while we're on this one slide, I just wanted to make a note that this, the two changes that Mr. Summer referenced in terms of last year's 21.3% return and also the decrease in the discount rate from CalPERS of 7% to 6.8% changes what our curve looks like in terms of going from the green to the dotted orange. If next year, CalPERS returns are lower than what they expect in terms of lower than their discount rate, then the curve changes the other direction and moves, moves up a bit. So we keep a close eye on the CalPERS return. We will keep coming back to you with updates. But just so you know, this is a snapshot, and depending on economic conditions, our curve changes all the time.
And to emphasize that, the volatility in the market right now, or at least for the last few years, has been higher than it ever has been historically. In fact, if you looked at the market today and didn't have a heart attack, it's, you know, you would see the volatility. The Dow went down by 1,100 points and came back, gave it all back. So if you ask me where the market's going to be on June 30, my answer is I have no idea. And, and so being prepared, understanding these changes are going to happen is a very big part of being prepared for, for just any future contingencies.
Thank you. Councilmember Pamela D. Jubani.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much, Mr. Summer. It's very, very important that we look at this. I'm really interested in that trust, 115, and the multiple contingency plans and figure out what we can do to be, you know, move forward. My question is, it's my understanding we have a bond that will be, I think it's going to be finished, Mr. Nevin, or whatever. Is it 2022?
2024.
2024. So what in relation will that have to do? Is there anything that, that you can see that would change anything for our pensions based on that, that bond that'll be finished in 2024, Mr. Summer?
The, the bond that's ending in 2024, the money, was that a pension obligation bond?
It was.
Okay, so the money from that bond, when the bond was issued, that money was given to CalPERS. So that got you up to the funded position you're in right now. Right now, so CalPERS is using that money, and that's in these calculations. The money you're paying to bondholders is not being shown as part of this. And that is, you know, you should track that as part of your total pension costs. The money, both to the bondholders, as well as the money that you're paying to CalPERS, and any money that you might put in a Section 115 trust at any point in time, that all becomes pension contributions, pension costs, that you want to keep track of so that you know how much you're setting aside towards this. But that should, that shouldn't change anything. Those bonds amounts are, are set, and they're already in here.
Thank you very much for that information. Thank you, Mr. Nevin, because we know he keeps a sharp eye on everything, as well as our, he and our city manager. So, and I appreciate that. You guys working together. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You, Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation, Mr. Summer. I think this is great to see that there's actually an increase in, in our investments. I mean, compared to what we've seen in the past, although things can change, but that's a huge jump from what we've seen before. But as far as next steps, you know, I think I'm interested in seeing if there could be kind of a multiple approach in being able to put dollars into different methods, if possible. For instance, if staff will be providing some recommendations. But I think it's important for us to put money aside, as well as if there is a you know, other needs and within Daly City that we also look at that. I, I think that we have to be very mindful around the, you know, dollars we have now, but then also, you know, put resources to where we need it. So that's just, and I know that the next steps will be coming from city manager and also Director Nevin. So I look forward to seeing what they recommend. But I'd like to see also just not one, not putting the resources into one trust, but also to see if there's a way to actually have put the monies in different arenas. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Shauna, I think I saw your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Das McCall. I just wanted to address that there will be a citywide budget presentation from myself and staff on February, I believe it's the 28th. And so this was sort of the precursor. This is just one piece to the total picture. And within that presentation on the 28th, there'll be several recommendations, options for council to choose as well as sort of the forecasting that we are working with this next year in light of the pandemic and all of those things. So all great questions and thank you, Ira, for addressing those questions and Tim. But stay tuned. This was sort of a preheat for our overall budget presentation in February.
Thank you so much. Shauna, are there any other? Vice Mayor Ray Buena Ventura.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I want to start thinking about the possible solutions. And I like to go back to the slide that you had presented up there about some of the options that we have. And so I'm interested in, in actually, Mr. Summer, what is your recommendation about all those possible scenarios playing out? Because I really would like to start thinking about them and before we get to our next step and maybe researching it myself and trying to have a better understanding of this. So I'm just interested in what your take is and what you, what you would make in terms of recommendation as to those things to do.
And a lot of it depends on your, your, your revenue stream, your sources of revenues, how stable they are over time. You know, so deciding whether you want to do things that, that take advantage of those, you know, if, if you're not worried about them disappearing. But again, multiple approaches, I think, you know, having a lot of agencies in the last year have taken, have looked again at pension obligation bonds. They had done them before. They didn't necessarily work out well in the past, but because of historically low rates, as well as some of the changes made to simplify the pension obligation bonds, a lot of agencies have become very successful using those bonds to pay off some of their unfunded liability. One, Section 115 pension trusts also in the last two years have been just, their, their use has just been jumping up astronaut, you know, exponentially. So tho- those are the, the sort of the two biggest tools that I think could have the biggest impact depending upon your, your comfort level with risk. And, and finding a way to design them so that they lower the risk level. So you don't have to be as, you know, you don't have reason to be quite as uncomfortable. So it's, it's not, it's not a very simple, short discussion. It's usually one where we'll take some time through workshops and working with your staff to, to pull, put the things together to sort of customize the recommendations to your needs. Generally, I would suggest, you know, if you have revenue someplace else and you don't need to issue bonds, it's always better to be able to use that money. But if you're going to issue bonds, doing it when interest rates are low is a great opportunity. This also may be a good time for me to, to thank your staff for all the time and effort they put in in working with me to put this presentation together. We had many meetings to go through this presentation. They did a really good job. I have a tendency to love getting into the details. And they wanted me to make sure that I gave this presentation in English. So I want to thank your staff for doing it, for really, you know, helping guide this whole thing.
Well, you did a great job. I understood it and it was very clear and simple. So thank you.
I just wanted to add a thank you to your question, Mr. Vice Mayor regarding our options and Mr. Summers discussion about, you know, depending on the city's revenue and our stability with respect to that revenue. And Daly City's revenue is, we've talked about it before in the past, but where, where our sales tax comes from, our property tax. When we have economic swings, Daly City is very susceptible to ups and downs. Just as you saw the CalPERS investment returns year over year. When those things occur, that really affects Daly City specifically. So it's something for us to consider, looking at the revenue side. And I appreciate Mr. Summer bringing that up because we are unique and Daly City is susceptible to, to market swings, just like other cities, but, but maybe even more so.
Are there any other comments from my colleagues? I think I have Councilmember Glenn Sivester, you still have your hand up? Is there anything else that you'd like to add?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'll lose my hand.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Summer. Thank you, Mr. Nevin. Thank you for this presentation. I'm looking forward to seeing the multiple approaches to address our CalPERS situation. And I really appreciate the, you know, the customization and the, you know, understanding our context and knowing that Daly City is different from other cities. And I really appreciate the work and I'm looking forward to our February 28th citywide budget presentation. Okay, moving on. Second presentation is proclaiming January 2022 as Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Pamela Estes, Human Trafficking Program Coordinator from San Mateo County. So the, let me see if I can get out the proclamation out quick. Okay. Okay, so whereas the United States Senate designate January 11 as National Human Trafficking Awareness Day in 2007 and beginning in January 2010 by presidential proclamation, each January has been designated National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And whereas human trafficking involves commercial sexual exploitation and labor exploitation, sex trafficking is defined as a commercial sex act that is induced by force, fraud or coercion. If the person has not attained the age of 18 years old, force, fraud or coercion is not required. Labor trafficking is defined as the recruitment, harboring, transportation, provision or obtaining of a person for labor or services through the use of force, fraud or coercion for the purpose of subjection to involuntary servitude, peonage, debt bondage or slavery. And whereas human trafficking is human rights violation and a violation of both federal and California law, it also promotes the breakdown of families and communities, fuels organized crime, deprives countries of human capital, undermines public health and imposes large economic costs. And whereas the crime of human trafficking is present in every day country, every country and every US state. And whereas the FBI has identified California and the San Francisco Bay Area as an area of high prevalence for human trafficking. Although human trafficking is illegal, victims often do not recognize their victimization, do not know that help is available or were to seek assistance. And whereas forced labor, involuntary domestic servitude and commercial sexual exploitation of adults and youth have been found to exist within local communities. And whereas the city of Daly City has dedicated resources, including the San Mateo County Human Trafficking Program and has supported the efforts of the San Mateo County Police Chiefs and Sheriff's Association to identify, address and prevent human trafficking within San Mateo County. Now therefore, I, Roderick Das McCall, Mayor and the members of the city council, hereby proclaim January 2022 as Human Trafficking Prevention Month in the city of Daly City and encourage the Daly City community to provide efforts in the fight against human trafficking. And to join us, we have Pamela Estes from Human Trafficking Program Coordinator of San Mateo County.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for putting this important proclamation on your agenda tonight to bring awareness to the crime of human trafficking and bring this attention to your community who's watching the, the meeting. I'm Pamela Estes. I'm the Human Trafficking Program Coordinator for San Mateo County and I graciously accept this proclamation. Unfortunately, many people still think human trafficking happens over there in other countries, but it happens in our country. It occurs in San Mateo County and it happens to boys and girls and men and women, foreign born and United States citizens. In fact, in 2021, the Human Trafficking Program conducted a voluntary assessment of many of the nonprofit organizations and agencies within our county. And in the year 2020, there was determined that there were a range of 286 to 306 victims of human trafficking that had some connection to San Mateo County. That's about 23 people a month. So we have no way of knowing how many people who are being victimized but have not been yet identified. The Human Trafficking Program was created in 2015. It's supported by Measure K funds. We work within the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office and we take direction from the Police Chiefs and Sheriff's Association. It's currently staffed by myself. We're a part-time position and we have another part-time position that we're, will fill as soon as we understand what's needed after we get word from the Office of Victims for Crime about a federal grant that we've applied for. At the San Mateo Human Trafficking Program, our responsibilities are to enhance the response to human trafficking countywide. We do this in several different ways. We seek to encourage collaborative partnerships among county agencies and non-governmental organizations. We work to enhance the delivery of services to victims within our county. We train, help train law enforcement, provide training and education to the community and help raise awareness about this crime. The Human Trafficking Initiative is a meeting that we hold monthly, except for the month of December, on the second Tuesday of the month. It's open to the public. So anyone who's interested in learning more about the response to human trafficking or getting involved can attend those meetings. They can contact me at stophumantrafficking@smcgov.org or go to the website, which is stophumantraffickingsmc.org. And we'd love to have them at the meeting. So thank you for passing this resolution and inviting me to be here tonight. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Estes. I know that we have some comments. Vice Mayor Ray Buena Ventura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Estes, for coming on today. Yeah, I think your organization has done a, a lot of good work for our community and I, I thank you for that and for having this, this place for people to go to. My question is, if we do run across some victims, someone we suspect is human trafficking and we have the opportunity to dialogue or talk to them, what could we tell them about what your agency can offer in terms of helping them? Like, for example, are we able to tell them you, you'll be able to get them shelter? You'll be able to, you know, I, I'd like to know what I can tell them to expect help from, from you folks.
Great. So we don't, the, I, the Human Trafficking Program sits under the Sheriff's Office and we work with other agencies to provide assistance. We recently have been given a grant from the Board of Supervisors, which is allowing us to enter into relationships with several agencies here to offer case management, to hold a shelter bed. Unfortunately, with the closure of the Monarch Shelter that was run here in our county, we have zero beds for, specifically for human trafficking victims in San Mateo County. So we end up making referrals to agencies in other counties. And really what, what victims need is very unique to each one of them. Some are completely dependent on their trafficker. So absent their trafficker, they do need housing and, and food and clothing and shelter. And we can make referrals to other agencies in the county to provide that. Some are specific to victims that have a nexus with their county, but there are agencies within the Bay Area that get federal grant funding who are open to victims from any county. Then, you know, many of them have complex trauma, so they need trauma-informed care and they need trauma counseling. And so we can try to connect them with different organizations that can provide that to them as well. So many people do not see themselves as victims, as mentioned in the proclamation, because trafficking is insidious from the standpoint of people grooming and developing relationships of trust with people before they take advantage of their vulnerabilities and exploit them. So if you are, are speaking to someone who is victimized, we would encourage them to reach out to law enforcement. If they don't want to reach out to law enforcement, they can reach out if they're, it's a sex trafficking victim, says that is a sex crime. They can reach out to Rape Trauma Services, which is located in our county and speak with their counselors and look for assistance through them. We have a wonderful resource within the whole United States called the National Trafficking Hotline Number. That wasn't included in the proclamation, so I'll give that number now. But the National Human Trafficking Hotline Number is a resource available to victims. It will try to connect them to resources in their area. It also is a place where you or I, if we see suspicious circumstances, can also call and give a report of those suspicious circumstances. The, the beauty of that number is that many times you and I are in our own neighborhoods and we're really not seeing that much different. But if we were to go to another town for a vacation or something like that, we might be in hotels and around things where we may see things suspicious and not know where to call in that location. So the National Human Trafficking Hotline Number is a good number across the USA. And the number is 1-888-373-7888. Again, that's 1-888-373-7888. I have it in my contacts in my phone. I encourage other people to put it there. Additionally, because there, the National Human Trafficking Hotline is seeing a tremendous increase in the number of victims that are communicating with them through text and not through phone. We know that many victims may have access to a phone, but picking up the phone and actually speaking to somebody can be dangerous. So they do have a text information line as well where you can text them. And that number is 233-733. Again, that's 233-733. That's the National Human Trafficking Hotline text line. So those are some of the resources that I can offer to you tonight.
Thank you. Very helpful.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a very similar question. First of all, thank you for the work that you do. As you mentioned, you know, sometimes it's really, it's very fearful for many folks and some folks don't even see that they're actually being victimized. And so having you all as a resource is very important. And so, yeah, my question was if, if who, how do we, what is the number to call? And in that respect, and so you answered it. So thank you for the continued work that you do for our county.
Thank you. And I just have to mention, most of the, most of the referrals that come to our program are through law enforcement or through many of the hospitals. But anybody who would like to get in touch with the Human Trafficking Program, you can email or, or use the website and get to us through the website.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Das Manalo. Councilmember Pamela D. Jupani.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Great to see you, Ms. Estes, again. I see you're still at it. And it's still part-time and we still don't have the resources that we need. And you and I spoke about like, when we had the SF Cat and dealing with all that. And I haven't forgotten about the potential legislation. So I'll be in touch with you this week and we can talk about that and see what we can do. And to let people know, in this county, with all the money that, that goes out, including that $10 million of PPE out the window that were damaged, we do not have the resources that we need in this county for these victims. One of the other places that used to be open, as you know, also closed. And it was started by a local person here, but sadly these things open and close. So we need something steady and we should support and figure out how to get these fundings in this county. This county has the money, they pay the high. This county has the money. They pay the high salaries through Rattler County, which is nothing wrong with the people and the, against them. But this is really pretty serious. So, as you know, you worked with my friend that's a judge on this, so I appreciate it. And I'll, I'll be in touch. And thank you so much. It's unbelievable. And I know you work with Homeland Security. And thank you to our Daily City Police, who I know have worked with victims and have on the protocols and really have done quite a lot with our detectives. So, and South City and so forth. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Giovanni. I have a thank you, Ms. Estes, for your presentation and your conversation. I just have one question. Are there, like, language access to the services? I just want to know if there's, if it's culturally, culturally relevant or responsive.
It's, it's an excellent question. It, it depends on, you know, we have many different cultural, you know, immigrants from different cultural backgrounds in our county, so it really depends. That is something we definitely can improve on, no doubt about that. It depends on the resources that they need and where we can, you know, to be able to direct them to some that are culturally appropriate. The one thing I can mention is that the National Human Trafficking Hotline does support 120 different languages, so that's really helpful.
Great. Hey, thank you for your work that you do. I think, you know, be, being in my own classroom, a lot of my own students, and I get the whole range of students, from young to seniors. And, you know, when we talk about issues such as human trafficking, a lot of times people don't know that this is happening. It's happening under the radar. Ideas of, like, slave trade that are still continuing on, and people think that it's something that's over, but this is a very relevant issue that's happening in our community. And I just want to, again, repeat the numbers. So the national hotline is 1-888-373-7888. And by text, the national hotline for the text is 233-733.
Correct.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Moving forward, can I have a motion for the approval of minutes for a regular meeting on January 10, 2022, unless there are some edits?
Motion to approve?
You have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Next is approval of the agenda or the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that would like, that any of my colleagues like to pull? Oh, my God. Can I get him? A motion to, to approve the consent agenda, unless there are items to be pulled?
Motion to approve a consent agenda?
Okay, so we got a first by Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni and a second by Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Okay. We have a word rejected, so we have a word, so item number 10, award a purchase contract for one-
If I am, Mr. Mayor, if, I, I believe we just need a voice vote on the consent agenda.
Yeah, you're right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Getting ahead of myself. Okay, so we are able to approve the consent agenda. Moving on, to number 10, award a purchase contract for one Caterpillar Model 906M compact wheel loader, and we have Staff Member Jeff Fornesi for this section of the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. The item before you is for the purchase of a Caterpillar Model 906M compact wheel loader. Staff recommends City Council approve and authorize the city manager or her designee to execute a purchase order with Peterson Cat in the amount of $117,877.45 for a Caterpillar Model 906M compact wheel loader. Loaders are a critical piece of heavy-duty construction equipment used by staff in the water and wastewater department. They're used as a primary tool to move and relocate loose material used for construction and repair of water and wastewater pipes, as well as loose material management within their facilities. The department operates two combination backhoe loaders and one loader. The loader is the unit recommended for replacement and is currently 25 years old. The estimated useful life of this type of equipment is, is roughly 15 years or when the motor hits 5,000 hours. The fleet maintenance operation has seen a measurable increase in the amount of downtime due to wear and tear of the loader. An approval for this purchase will provide the Water Wastewater Department with improved availability and improved operational ability compared to what they are experiencing with this older loader. Replacement of the loader will also address requirements from the California Environmental Protection Agency and the County Resource Board. The California Government Code authorizes public agencies to participate in cooperative purchasing agreements like those established by Sourcewell, while still adhering to the city's municipal code and adopted rules and procedures for the procurement of vehicles and equipment. By utilizing a cooperative purchase program, the city can streamline the process of procuring vehicles and equipment. Staff have reviewed this to ensure the pricing is aligned with the quote provided by Peterson Cat. As part of the purchase, Peterson Cat has agreed to provide a trade-in allowance totaling $6,000 for the existing loader. And there is sufficient funding for this purchase in the fiscal year 2021 Motor Vehicle Replacement Fund. Staff, so that concludes my presentation. Staff, in summary, staff recommends the City Council approve and authorize the city manager or her designee to execute a purchase order with in the amount of $117,877.45 for the purchase of a Caterpillar Model 906M compact wheel loader. I am available to provide any additional information desired by the mayor or council if so. Thank you.
I see some hands up. So Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, go right ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Fornesi, good to see you. Haven't seen you in quite some time. I want to first start off with a compliment. You made mention that the average lifespan is 15 years. And according to the staff report, looks like this has been in service for 25 years. So, great job. I see that it is sorely needed. The question I have is, whoever can answer it, I see it's coming out of the Motor Vehicle Fleet Fund. Is this a circumstance where it can come out of enterprise funds so that we can conserve funding in the Motor Vehicle Fleet for funding for other items?
The equipment like this, funding is collected on an annual basis through internal service charges and depreciation and replacement costs. And so those costs have been collected over the years through, through the wastewater and water department.
Right. So is the Motor Vehicle Fleet Funds part of enterprise funds? Or can, can we make a distribution from enterprise instead of the Motor Vehicle Fleet Fund?
The enter, enterprise fund contributes money to the, the Motor Vehicle Fleet Replacement Fund.
Gotcha. Thank you. That's all I have.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Are there any other comments, questions for Mr. Fornesi? Seeing none, can I get a, a motion to adopt the resolution by, adopt the resolution by roll call vote?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
So, first by Councilmember Justin Manalo, second by Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni, the city clerk, if you can do the honors.
Mr. Buonventura.
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni.
Aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Councilmember-
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye. Okay, so motion passes. Thank you, Fornesi, Mr. Fornesi. And moving, thank you. Have a good night. Okay. Next on our agenda is Public Appearances and Oral Communications. I'll hand it to Ms. Leilan Ramos.
In accordance with the Brown Act laws governing regular meetings, the City Council is not authorized to speak to or take action on any other items in this meeting. Members of the public who wish to comment may click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. It is important to note that staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment, and that person will be the last verbal comment. If additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, the mayor may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org to be added to the record and shared with the City Council. When you hear your name called, staff will send you a request to unmute your microphone, and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers not in compliance will be muted. Any use of profanity will result in the speaker being muted immediately. Looks like we have two hands raised. First, speaker's caller. You may press star six to unmute.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
So this is the public. A couple of weeks ago, I was hung up on exercising my First Amendment right. So that needs to be looked at, city attorney. We need to go into that. Something, you know, off the record here, I heard tonight about, something about slave trading or some victim trading. I want to learn more about that. That's very concerning. Obviously, we should have a facility for something like that. We need funding for that. I mean, that's paramount to get victims the help they need, along with the mentally ill. Also, we still haven't covered the Veterans Day event. There was an event held for the veterans or veterans Memorial Building. We've yet to hear that, so the state's going to look in on that. There's going to be a financial audit. Also, the Attorney General's, General's been contacted with all this nonsense with the police and stuff. And definitely do want to make sure that we're on the same page with a few other matters. So we want to make sure that we're in line with the community gardens. I mean, it's very, very important that we do have a, Mr. Sylvester, perhaps you could spearhead this, we have the facilities for the community gardens, a mental health facility, as well as a community center. And, I mean, I was actually rather, wow, I felt really bad about the victims. Unbeknownst to me, this was happening in our community and perhaps in San Francisco. Also, I did some research into the housing, the housing issue. So in Daly City, according to apartments.com, there's 549 units. South City, there's 374. San Bruno, there's about 210. Coleman, there's about 57. So that alone is around 1,200 units. San Francisco has about 5,100. So that's a food for thought on the, the garden and the project at the Cerro del Rey. Other than that, you know, I mean, we need to make changes as well. So we need to look into that as well. Okay? I appreciate that.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Last Hand Raise, another call-in user. Please press star six to unmute. Caller by phone, you can press star six to unmute.
Dave here.
Dave? Hello?
We can hear you.
I'm calling in. Can you guys please make the public comments, I'm actually here late. Make the comments in the beginning instead of the middle or the end. That would really help. The public, gentlemen, my name of the public called in a while back. He was hung up on. We didn't, really appreciate that. That's something we need to work on. Also, hang on, I'm losing my connection. Let me call back.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is appointments. Board Commission appointed, appointment, appointments. Do we have any appointments at this time? Board or Commission? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on to the next part of our agenda, Council Committee Reports. Are there any Council Committee Reports from my colleagues? Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you very much. I'm pulling it up right now. On, on our meeting, on our January 21, 2021 meeting, the Basca held its regularly scheduled meeting via teleconference. The board adopted the consent calendar, which included the approval of the minutes, of course, and also received the filing, the budget status of 11:30 2020. There was election of officers at that meeting. And in that meeting, we elected Mr. Gustav Larson and Mr. Tom Chambers as chair and vice chair respectively. Also, the RFA Board met during a short adjournment of the Basca Board meeting, and the RFA Board adopted the consent calendar, which included the approval of the minutes for January 16, 2020, and also the board held its annual election, which is Mr. Gustav Larson and Mr. Tom Chambers. As usual, we have our SFPUC report. And Mr. Ritchie reported as far as the water supply conditions and update for the regional water systems. As of January 19, 2021, the regional water system was at 78.4% of the total system storage, which is slightly lower than the normal level of 81% of the total system storage at this time of the year. Hetch, hetchy precipitation is very low for this time of the year, tracking the historically low precipitation year of 1977. So up-country snowpack, which is a major source of water supply and storage for the regional water supply, is also very low for this time of year. Again, tracking the lowest year of the record of 2015. Since October 1, the beginning of the water year, these triconsitions have resulted in no allocation of new water supply to San Francisco from the Toluome River for storage in the regional water supply. While the national precipitation forecast indicates a potential for rain in the next two weeks, this year has been exceptionally dry to date, and conversations are beginning regarding to the potential need for call for voluntary rationing. SFPUC will be sending contractually required formal letter that will be presenting the status of water supplies to the wholesale customers by the end of January. Basca will remain engaged with its member agencies with the SFPUC on this issue. Some of the action items on the, was the board approved the proposed modifications to the adopted fiscal year 2021 work plan. And then also the reports on water supply and demand, as well as a FERC Bay Delta Plan Update. There was also a discussion item on fiscal year 2122 work plan and budget planning session. Our next Basca Board meeting will be held on March 18, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Are there any other reports from my colleagues? Okay, I have a couple. Okay, I have a couple. And so on January 13, 2021, there was a special meeting on COVID-19 and Omicron strain. And we had different reports from Congresswoman Jackie Speer to our county health officer, Scott Morrow, and also our council, I'm not council, our lead person in education for the county. And they were talking about how this variant is very different from the Alpha and Delta strains. As you have seen, I think, and for those that are on social media, there have been now a distribution of antigen testing kit, home testing kits that are available. You can register, apply for them, and then they can get you them free. Congresswoman Jackie Speer said that there was 500 million purchased by President Biden. And if you, there's also opportunity to get these home tests reimbursed. So health plans will offer reimbursements for about eight tests per month. Our health officer said that this month is very, very bleak. The world has never experienced a disease or this contagious as Omicron. He also mentioned that he wouldn't be surprised if, like, a lot of people will get exposed or infected by this strain. So he didn't want to sugarcoat it. He was just, he was being real about the reality of how contagious the Omicron variant is. So I urge everyone to get vaccinated, get your booster, and, you know, let's protect our communities. And I know that we had staff that was present at this meeting, and also Councilmember Pamela DiGiovanni was on this call as well. I don't know if you would like to add anything, Councilwoman Pamela DiGiovanni?
Perfect. You covered it all, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And then also have another report on Peninsula Clean Energy, where we approved the resolution directing our CEO to vote as a director on the California Community Power Board to approve the energy storage services between our California Community Power and Tumbleweed Energy Storage. And what is, it was a special meeting that was online on January 18, 2022. And by doing this, we are, actually, it's a, it's a conglomerate, a collaboration in terms of the purchasing efforts by us, Peninsula Clean Energy, Silicon Valley Clean Energy, Clean Power SF, San Jose Clean Energy, Valley Clean Energy, Sonoma Clean Energy, and Redwood Coast Energy. This is just kind of like a way and a move to provide different clean or cleaner approaches to storing energy. And we also approved that our CEO, oh, I actually did the same thing. But we were, so we were able to approve this agreement between PCE being part of this collaboration with the different CC agencies and Tumbleweed Energy Storage. And I also see Councilmember Glenn Sylvester's hand up, so go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll first start off on the PCE. You know, I'm always interested to hearing you speak about what's happening down there. Perhaps you can put your ear to the floor and ascertain from your colleagues there, their thoughts on the new solar bill that they're trying to pass, in the sense, if you're a new customer to solar, you will have to pay X amount of dollars per month, number one, to connect to the grid. And I know PCE has heavily invested in solar farms. And also, they want to reduce the amount that you get back from the utility for selling solar back to the utility. So I just wonder how that will affect PCE and their solar farm. So just a thought. I kind of missed this, and I'm glad I remembered. I had a meeting this past week with the Office of Emergency Services of San Mateo. And I'll first start off in regards to the budget. They have changed basically to their own unit away from, I believe it was under the San Mateo County sheriffs. And they're still trying to work out the budget items as to who will pay for what and what the sheriffs would no longer pay for. So that's still in transition. They've been doing a great job thus far. As you know, cities in San Mateo pays into the Office of Emergency Services, that is JPA. Another issue that was brought up, I'm sure you've heard the news, about the PPE left outside at the San Mateo County Event Center. The Chair Supervisor Canepa has made mention, he was very concerned. And they're still conducting an investigation as to what actually happened, where the ball was dropped. But County Manager Callagie left no stone unturned in the sense he immediately came out and said that he is responsible for it. But Supervisor Canepa would like to know the full story of all those responsible for it. So they're still looking into that. They also said that the news reports may be a little off in the sense as to the amount of equipment out there and what can be salvaged. So they're working into, looking into that as well. The issue I brought up to them was, I'm sure you've heard about Virus Geeks. I went down to San Mateo County Event Center on January 9th to test. And I made concerns that they give you a packet. You take the test and you drop it into a container on one of the many tables. And it's an open, I mean, it's an open container, similar to a red sharp container. And you just drop your pack in there. So as I walked up, I see everybody else is in there. And I said, well, I feel that that wasn't secure. And what's to prevent others from picking the packet out? Well, as it turns out, today is the 24th, and I still have not received the results. So yesterday, Virus Geeks finally reached out to me. If you ever take a test, the efficacy rate as to how long the samples would last is seven days. So apparently, something may have happened, which prompted Virus Geeks to send me a notice two days ago and say, come in and retest. But they're not admitting that they probably lost a sample. And I'm sure I'm not the only one that may have been affected. As a matter of fact, a council member in South San Francisco, who was also on the OES call, also made mention that he was in the same predicament. So that's all I have at this time, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Are there any other council committee reports? Seeing none, are there any city council reports? Councilmember Pamela DiGiovanni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Yeah, I just wanted to say that we all, most of us attended the, our Seton nurses and California Nurse Association held our virtual press conference with media and to address the severe understaffing that has continued and has not let up. And to let people know the understaffing is not due to COVID. This is a long-term issue where they don't want to pay the money to have the extra nurses because it saves them money. So it's to tell them, and AHMC, which is, most people know it by Seton, that these people want a contract, they want a fair contract. And the nurses are tired of being understaffed. And the way to retain the nurses and to recruit the nurses is, would give them what they are asking for. So now they're moving forward in negotiations. They moved a few steps, but still haven't ratified their contract. So we were going to keep abreast of that. And it was great to kick it off with the nurses Kathy and Osha and then Julie as her labor rep, because they're the ones that are working so hard. And I think anybody has had anything, as anybody in our life, that is the nurses that we've come in contact with. So that also, and a second thing I might want to note is a recent retirement. And we do have many, but I would like to note because this Patrick Chief Hensley, who retired, grew up in Daly City. He and his wife were Jefferson and Westmore. So if I may, after more than 27 years of dedicated service as the Daly City community, Chief of Police Hensley announced that he was retiring on January 14. Chief Hensley was born and raised, as I said, in Daly City. And not very often do you find that. So we're really blessed to have him in our community. He has many accomplishments that are noted on the Daly City Police Department Facebook page and otherwise. But I will say that Chief Hensley began this law enforcement career here in Daly City in, I believe it's 1990, my glasses, 94. And almost, or the department, an office of the chief of police in January 2018. That's when he first became our chief. So, and then I want to read a quote that I believe that he entered in. "It has been an honor to serve the community that means so much to me and my family. I retire very proud to have worked alongside the men and women of the Daly City Police Department. And I know their dedication to our community, safety, and well-being will continue." So he will be well missed, but this is always his home, him and his wife, because this is Daly City and we always welcome our own, we welcome everyone. And thank him for his service and outstanding service. And I know that he will be missed by many at our ceremony mall events, by Marie Valerosa and so many. So thank you very much for your time, and thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to highlight those two things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela DiGiovanni. Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I do want to say that I wanted to share with my colleagues that I have been appointed to the League of Cities Board. And so that we'll be able to have representation there and happy to be on that state, you know, Cal Cities Board. And so that just happened very recently and wanted to share with all of you. And also wanted to say to the staff, I think it's just another wave of the Omicron. And so thank you for all that you do as public, also an extension of public servants, right? And also just wanted to be able to share that with my colleagues as I recently just got the letter. And so we'll be able to have representation there. Thank you.
Congratulations, Councilmember Justin Manalo. That's a huge deal. Just gonna pause. Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. First of all, I just got an update on my phone. Just wanted to make mention, when we were going through approval for the Tesla Supercharger, a question was asked. I already knew the answer, and that was whether other EVs can charge on a proprietary system. And I did know the fact that they were doing it in Norway, the Netherlands. And I just received a text update that coming the third quarter of 2022, Tesla will employ something called Magic Dock, D-O-C-K, to which not only Tesla vehicles can charge, but any, and other EV vehicles, excuse me, can also charge. So I just wanted to bring that point up. Councilmember DiGiovanni brought up the issue about Chief Hensley. And I just wanted to add a comment and appreciation and about police in general. I'll first start off with Chief Hensley. This is all about you. After 27 years of service, you are to be commended for the service you have provided to the city. I know that, you know, why would someone leave in less than 30 years? And I'm sure with your passion and your love for the city, there may have been issues that may have caused an earlier retirement. But I do appreciate everything you have done for the community, for the people, and for your subordinates. I wanted to make mention that unless you've walked in the shoes of someone else, what is needed is full and complete transparency and understanding as to what police do. For the police officers, you know that you've undertaken a humble profession. And your community, they need you. You leave your families and your loved ones every day to come and to protect our loved ones. You yield a lot of power. You yield the power to take away somebody's freedom. In some cases, their lives. And that's very, very mighty. But you have to always make sure with your training that you do the right thing. Police officers are human beings as well. They wake up, they put on their pants, and this includes the women, one leg at a time, just like everyone else. I am so sorry that you are having to deal, in most cases, with the Ferguson effect. But I believe in having the conversation, the conversation with the community that you serve is very important. You are asked and tasked to do so much to include some professions as a track star, a paramedic, a lawyer, a psychiatrist, a social worker, a mentor, and other things. My kudos to you for what you do for our community. And we hope and continue that you will continue to do the same, of course. You know, having coming from previous law enforcement experience in San Francisco, just right across the border, as soon as I crossed that Daly City line, I know that things are a little bit different. We live by the spirit of the law and not by the letter. But when I came across that line and, and just a year or two ago, a police officer until this very day stopped me. And he said to me, sir, you need to wear your seatbelt. And, you know, they go through so much, but at the same time, they're human beings as well. Now to the community. I believe in a conversation must always be available to our community. Let's continue to have those conversations. Let's see how we can do better and how we can help each other. In my experience, if you don't want any problems with the police, don't do anything that will cause notice to you for them to look at you, such as lights on your car, excessive smoke, not wearing your seatbelt. But of course, they won't always have to take action because, again, of the Ferguson effect and living by the spirit of the law rather than the letter of the law. So with that all being said, I want to again thank Chief Hensley for your years of service. We will miss you. And I hope you've left a legacy for your officers and your subordinates below you to continue the great to continue the great work of protecting and serving our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Are there any other city council reports? Seeing none? Are there any staff reports?
No, thank you, Mayor, but congratulations to Chief Hensley on his retirement.
Thank you. Now to our last part of our adjournments. Let me pop it up where it is. We have a few adjournments, so we'll start with Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I have three. I might as well just go through all three of them. At the top of the, at the top of the list is Ray J. Allen. I'm bringing this up because I used to work with him. He was one of my colleagues. On January fifth, two thousand twenty-two, Dad took his last trip to heaven, only stopping at the Rainbow Bridge to pick up Arnold First, his feline buddy. Ray, a native and proud lifelong resident of San Francisco, passed peacefully on the fifth at the age of ninety-two. He was born and raised in San Francisco, attended neighborhood schools. Couple of them I went to as well, Paul Rivera, James Denman, Galboa High School, class of forty-seven, City College, and followed by San Francisco State College, where he played on the football team. Ray joined the San Francisco Police Department in nineteen fifty-two. That was two years before I was born. His first assignment was walking the beat, then on to directing traffic in downtown and driving a patrol car. He took the sergeant tests and passed the first time. He was hired to work in a district attorney's office with Arlo Smith. He loved being a police officer and retired in nineteen ninety-five with forty-five years of dedicated service. He is survived by his daughter Joanne Bilo Bowe and his son-in-law and a few others. The next one I have is a police officer Tyler Lenahan. He was killed when his police were struck head-on near Twelfth Avenue in Sacramento. He's from Elk Grove. The drunk driver was traveling in the wrong direction on the divided highway when he struck Officer Lenahan. The man was arrested by members of the California Highway Patrol as he attempted to walk away from the scene. The subject, who has at least one prior DUI arrest, was charged with a felony DUI. And the last one I have is a little heartbreaking for me. This is Officer Jason Rivera, aged twenty-two. And he passed away on January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, out of New York, the Thirty-second Precinct. He was twenty-two years old, and he was shot to death while responding to a call in a Harlem apartment. He is an immigrant, came from an immigrant family and grew up in a community with strained police relations, but joined the force to make a difference in the chaotic city. He once wrote, "I know that something as small as helping a tourist with directions or helping a couple resolve an issue will put a smile on someone's face." He wrote to his commanding officer when he was a probationary officer. I, I, I'm kind of skipping through this a little bit. His partner was also shot and he's also fighting for his life. But why did he become a police officer? He grew up in Manhattan. He noticed tensions with the police. According to a brief essay entitled, "Why I Became a Police Officer", a copy of which was obtained by the Associated Press, he said, "I remember one day I witnessed my brother being stopped and frisked. I asked myself, why are we being pulled over if we are in a taxi?" He wrote, "My perspective on police and the way they police really bothered me." But eventually, he noticed the department's working to improve the relationships and wanted to be involved. 'I realize how impactful my role is as a police officer would go in this chaotic city,' he wrote. So in the case, this was, you know, one of many calls that police officers, they signed up to do. Domestic violence is a very, very tough call, especially when you deal with different cultures. They handle domestic violence differently, and you have to thread that fine line. So I'd like to adjourn in memory of these three police officers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Up next, Councilwoman Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to adjourn in Arnold Augustine's memory. This is Mark Augustine's father. Arnold Augustine was born on January sixteen, nineteen fifty-six, to Dominga and Moses Louis Augustine in his province Barangai Barang Paniki Tarlock. He had five brothers and sisters. Arnold was the only one of five siblings who was able to travel to the United States for a better life. In nineteen ninety-four, he was able to reunite with his wife Susan Augustine and his children. Arnold was a hardworking man who juggled two to three jobs to support his family. He and Susan made sure that there was a roof over their heads and food on the table every day. The simplest pleasures in life brought great joy to Arnold. He loved traveling to the Philippines, where he would take a few weeks off, work to enjoy the island weather, and a steaming bowl of ariscaldo at the crack of dawn in Paniki Tarlock. He is survived by his loving wife Susan, four children, Lenny, Mark, Chris, and Arnold Dave Junior, and eight grand, eight grandchildren, Desailly Lynn, Elijah Ghul, Lair Helcon, Adrian J., Eli Atara, Brianna Irie, Keionoa Luan, and Zion Anthony. Arnold's grandchildren were his pride and joy. His legacy will live on through him. He fought to the very end, and his spirit fought until his body could no longer endure. Ironically, he peacefully went on to the Lord on Christmas Day. He will be deeply missed by his family and friends. And December twenty-fifth will not be a day of sorrow, but a way to uplift in knowing that Jesus was born on that same day. Condolences to the Augustine family. Also would like to adjourn in memory for Francisco Villarino Cabrera. It is with a heavy heart that I share that my uncle, my mother's brother, passed very recently. Francisco Villarino Cabrera, well-known as Kiko in the family, was born on December twelve, nineteen fifty-two, in Linga Pila Laguna, Philippines, to Marina Villarino Cabrera and Urbano Cabrera. Francis is a six child from the eldest of twelve siblings. He immigrated to the United States in June nineteen eighty-nine as the first batch with first preference, as his mother Marina petitioned him. He has resided in Daly City since then. Francis' core values was making sure he was a hard worker and was able to work in various places. His first job was at Philippine Grocery, Hilton Hotel, San Francisco International Airport, which during this time, he met his wife, Alanita Ferrer, the love of his life. Francis and Alanita were married on September five, two thousand eight. When he reached the age of sixty-two, he filed for early retirement as, and he was able to rest for a year. Then he was restless with his time, and he started working again at McDonald's for four years. And lastly, in the meat department at Seafood City. Francis fought, Tito Kiko fought stage four neuroendocrine cancer and passed on Saturday evening, January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. He is survived by his wife Ellen of thirteen years. His siblings, Josie, Rolando, Mercedes, Virginia, Teresita, Lourdes, Jimmy, Rafina, Rosemary, and Feliciano, and many nephews and nieces, and grandnephews and grandnieces. Personally, he was such a kind and gentle person, always willing to help. He was generous with his time. And you will never be forgotten, Tito Francis, Tito Kiko, we love you. Services will be held on February three and the funeral on February fourth. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. And to honor our, those ancestors, let's provide a moment of silence. Meeting adjourned. Everybody have a good night and be safe out there, everyone. Bye-bye.